I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please silence or turn off your cell phones and notice the locations of the emergency exits. Can we have a moment of silence? Please stand for the flag.
And flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Publics Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the Board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Ricano.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Present.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Reno. Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Dr. Anamon, Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our workshop meeting for January. First item on my report, I just wanted to notify everybody in the community watching at home that January is Board of Education Appreciation Month, or Board of Education Recognition Month. So we do have certificates for each board member, a copy of which will go up in the Board Office headquarters tomorrow morning. There's a resolution on the agenda you can read. I won't read it now, but I do want to just thank the board members here for all their support over the past year and really forever. It's a wonderful school district and what we do, we couldn't do it without the support of the Board of Education. We're about to have a robotics presentation in a few moments and this is obviously part of what we do and part of what you do to support. And just so the members of the community understand, the amount of time commitment that the board members give is remarkable. What you see at the board meeting is probably the tip of the iceberg. There are committee meetings, just lots of reading, emails, phone calls to go through. So even though it's only a couple hours a meeting, a couple times a month, the workload for these volunteers is remarkable. So thank you, West Milford Board of Education. Next up, we have our West Milford High School robotics teacher, Mrs. Flaherty, here with a few of her students. We did a robotics presentation. We were just talking, maybe like five years ago, I think, or thereabouts. And obviously, this is something the board has always supported. My know Mr. Novak is a huge proponent of it. We're always looking for new competitions to join, new pieces to build, new things to buy for our kids and for our staff. So they're in the middle of their season right now. They just had a pretty big competition in Sparta, maybe two weeks ago. There's an ongoing, they have a pretty busy schedule. So I'm going to pass off to Mrs. Flaherty now if you want to introduce your students and kind of talk through what you guys are doing this year.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mrs. Flaherty. I know a lot of you. Thank you for having us here. Yes, we have, since you saw us last, we have three competitions that we now get involved with. And in my class, because I have a robotics one class, robotics two class, and a competition robotics class that we do at West Milford High School, even though there's a curriculum for the first robotics one and two, I allow any student in those classes to jump into robotics competition, which is the full year course. And these two ladies, Meadow Babcock and Daphne King, are first-year robotics in my class, but they're all competition because they've both competed before. So the one that we, the first one that Meadow is going to speak to is what is known as Sea Perch. Sea Perch is the second one on that handout. Yeah, I think so. Can she?
Yes. Yep, got it.
So I just want to say thank you for having us here first. And I want to shout out to Joe Connors for getting us into Sea Perch and giving us our first kit. And basically, our first competition for Sea Perch had us retrieving sea clean, it was called sea cleanup. And it had us retrieving trash from the seafloor, which is very applicable to real life. And it was sponsored by the Navy, and it is sponsored by the Navy this year again. And this year's competition is marine retrieval, which includes not only retrieving marine samples from the sea, but also water samples. And there is a technical design report included with this, which is a big piece of it, too.
So that also means that that submersible robot needs to be modified. It needs to, that was last year's, they have to design, put something else in there to be able to pick up what it has to pick up and that's what they're immersed in right now. We have two teams this year. Meadow is leading a team, Daphne is leading a team. And the technical, we only had one team last year. And when Meadow speaks to the technical piece, that's a big piece, which comes, we're going to win that this year. We already know that. We said that this year. So there's a lot of work that goes with that. And also, I also have a club. There are about eight students in the classes that we have, the robotics one, two, and the competition classes. And right now, we have eight to 10 students who come for club now, who are going to be involved in one that you see in there specifically. So that is that competition. And Daphne is going to speak to Vex. Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to put, I'm sorry, Meadow. I was supposed to, this is, I'm sorry. We took photos last year of what we did. And this is them, last year, at Sea Perch. Yeah, bring it around. We are at the Neptune Aquatic Center. It costs us nothing except for what we purchase as far as parts go. And last year, I was able, knowing that certain things that we needed, I was able to purchase them at the end of last year so I could get them in time for this year. So it was an incredible experience, incredible.
Wow.
It was. Okay.
Mrs. Flaherty.
Yes.
Would you take donations for the equipment that you need for this?
I sure would.
Okay. Anybody want to make a donation? Here it is.
Okay.
We need a pole.
Okay.
We're working on that, right, Dan? We're working on that.
This wire can definitely help you with that. No problem with that.
Well, Mrs. Ricano, she has one too. She has one too. Yeah, we got it.
Sure. Come on over.
The robotics. We open in March.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, we need, that's good. Daphne is going to speak. This is the one we just did. This is Vex.
That is something else.
She's going to show you, too, what we had to do. She's going to tell you what we had to do. Go ahead.
Um, Vex is a competition where we get a task to perform at around the, like, end of May, the year before the competition happens. And you have to build a robot that can do a 15-minute, 15-second autonomous period, which is where you have a program run, the robot to be able to do a task in those 15 seconds. And then there's a 90-second driver period where you maneuver the robot to complete those tasks. And it is timed and scored. This year, we had to shoot this into a goal, spin a roller, and move this into goals.
Go ahead. We couldn't do this one because we couldn't get the parts we needed in time to try to build a system where we could shoot the goals, and they are the goals, into this. We built this.
We also built a mock shield.
Yes, we built a mock shield. Oh, I'll hold it.
Does it have a name?
Yes, Highlanders.
Highlanders. Highlanders.
So when it, and we got points for this one because it has to be on the color of your team and we were able to do that. And there's more than one set up in the Vex field.
Wow.
It's also important to say that you work with another school. There's four robots in the field at the same time.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so you have to, you kind of strategize with the other schools. Hey, what can your robot do? What can your robot do? So that you can optimize and get the most points. Everybody wants to try it. You can try it right from the seat.
You want to try it?
Oh, sure.
I like to play.
Okay, here we go. I'm sort of like my brain right now.
You're that person.
Try to push down. Bring it over here.
Well, you're not going to use that, Lippi.
I think I don't want to break it on you.
All right, you're not going to break it.
Get it, Daphne. Put them in there. I love this stuff. I think it's so much fun.
What do you think was more challenging, the underwater or the on-mad one?
You guys can, what do you think?
Well, I personally think that this one was more challenging because there was a lot more components to it. And, you know, there's just a lot of work that has to go into building it as well.
I agree with that one, actually.
Do you make a blueprint of the design before you actually?
Um.
We draw it.
Yeah, we draw it. We look at what other people are doing and then we come up with our own ideas and we sketch it out. And then we usually start just by having a base and then building it.
Wow. And you have to measure everything and cut everything. And who does the cutting for you of that metal?
We sent it downstairs with somebody who's got an okay to go down there and use the, whatever equipment we have down there in the shop or anywhere down there.
It's a team effort.
Oh, absolutely. Or we do it ourselves. We do have tools that we cut them ourselves.
Fantastic. We can hire these to print papers around the administration office.
Sure could. I'm going to speak briefly about the third one. This is a big competition. This is about as close to robotics first, or first robotics, as you're going to get. This is very difficult. And this one, we got involved with prior to COVID. And then we were going to go that next year, but COVID came, so we got cut off. So we have a little jumpstart on this. This isn't this at all. This is a whole nother system. It's called Tetrix. We have a base, but this is brand new. This is now in the works. That's on the third page there, and that's in that pamphlet that I sent you. It's incredibly technical. And with this one, you have to have nine drivers. And you have to have nine drivers. You get three shots at getting your best score and it has to be a different driver. And the purpose of that is to get a lot of kids involved in robotics. For this year, what this Tetrix that we have to build has three tasks. The first task is they have to play a game of dominos. And I need to tell you that a lot of my students don't know how to play dominos. I had to teach them how to play dominos. So what they have to do, and everything is to scale. So everything, this is actually six inches high. Your robot has to be able to, and you get six minutes, to go around, I'll say on something like this, flip over as many dominos as you can. These are the dominos, to some effect that, to scale what they're going to use. We made them. They have to go and they have to turn them over, get a double, and start playing a game of dominos. And use as many dominos as they can for points. The second thing they have to do, which we're working on this and I need to give a nice shout out to you, Mr. Novak, because this is where, this is so important. This robot also, and the robot has to do all three tasks in one contained unit. It's going to be 24 inches up. And the reason I'm speaking to this is because I just went to the meeting, whoever gave me that day to go down there, thank you. I had to go down there to the kickoff meeting to find out what it was going to be about down at PCCC, because that's where it's held. And it's a North Jersey competition. It's a big competition. The robot also has to be able to come up, unscrew this, three of them. One, two, three, unscrew it. Take it off, not take it off, but here, take it off. It's going to be on a piece of PVC. Take it off, put it to the side, pick up another one, put it on, and put the, and then re, and then put the tire back on. So yesterday, we brainstormed on, oh my God, that's what we did. And thank goodness, we now have a 3D printer. Thank you so much. Because we can fabricate any piece that we can use, we can fabricate it and it's legal. So we are going to, they're working on it now. I have students who are all over that, who have it out of the box, got it going, asking me for this wire, asking me for this. And they're going to fabricate the piece to be able to fit it right on it, to take it off. So, and the third piece of that is an obstacle course. And that's for speed. And along the obstacle course, there might be a domino you might have to turn over. We never know what the obstacle course is until the day it happens. You may have to change a tire along the way, but it's for speed. The year with, first year we did it, we won that. We have a trophy in our room. We won that. So we got a trophy for the obstacle course. We also got a trophy for sportsmanship. There's also, you see on that, there's a timeline there that is so strict with the college. As far as progress reports go, they have to be submitted. And the team yesterday, because we're a team, they, hands up, I'll take care of the progress reports. Oh, yeah. So they're all on board. So we're very excited about getting this one underway and, you know, doing the very best we can. So thank you for your support. I.
Mrs. Flaherty. Thank you for being here, sorry.
What do you win?
Trophies.
Trophy? I would say you should push for a trip to Boston Dynamics and this way you can play with Atlas a little bit.
This one also doesn't cost us anything. All I have to do is bring a teacher with me that has a serve as a line judge. I do.
This is on a Saturday?
No, this one is during school. This one is two days during school. There's a day, then a skip, then a day. But this is Saturday. This is Saturday, that Sea Perch. This one is school.
Thank you again. Is there anything besides a printer, thank you, Mr. Novak, is there anything else we could do to support the robotics at the high school?
Mine is the pool.
I heard money.
And this is, and Mr. Novak is working on this and I think has worked on it, is that the biggest struggle we have is that when it comes to competition, you don't know about it until a few months before it happens. So it's really hard to get parts in a fast turnover with the system that we have. It is the system. I can do it for the next year, but not when it comes to competition. I can't get them quick enough because of the system that we have.
Where do you get the parts?
Well, they either come from, this comes from, I'm trying to think of that vendor name that we use, Home Depot, which I know we have an account there. Home Depot, there's a Tetrix supplier that we have. There's a Vex supplier that we have. We have them. I just can't get them fast enough when we find out we have a competition and we're like, we could really use that, Mrs. Flaherty. You know, I'm like, I can't get it quick enough.
So. Is it because of supply chain right now?
No, it's because of our purchase order system. And I don't mean it in a bad way, but the process that we do, it's hard to get money right away. I mean, I would buy it and I have. Believe me, there's a lot of parts I buy just because I, because.
Yeah.
But it is, because that's what you do. But some I can't, you know? If I need $230 or whatever, believe me, it's not so crazy. But I can't keep doing that because I can't.
So would, so, which leads us to the commentary from Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
If a donation is made to you, would, I mean, I don't know, like, do we, would we, did we, who would we give the money to? Make it.
Barbara, that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. I turned my back to her.
So what, Mrs. Flaherty was referring to is Barbara and Mr. Schultz.
We had this discussion. We have a plan in place for this to be remedied.
There's a way to, yes. Yeah, make it faster for the thing.
Yes.
And we also talked about a robotics booster club.
That's a good idea.
To make sales.
Good idea.
You know, so we've had some great discussions about how to fund the, you know, donations are always welcome, but not always sustainable.
And who would the donations go to? Would it go to you guys? Would it go to her? Would it go to, I mean, what's the process?
It goes to schools.
Yeah, once we, once we know a problem exists, we try to work it out so that it doesn't exist anymore. So it would go to the student activity account so that they would have already access to it. So it would just be made out to West Milford High School with robotics and then it would be designated for that program.
Mrs. Flaherty, if there were people in town, community members that owned multiple 3D printers of their own, would you be able to, would they be helpful in helping print things for you?
Well, I think, what it is right now is I'm not really familiar with the products I need to use the 3D printer. I will be speaking to Mr. Van Wingerton this week. Like, I don't know what you order to be able to fabricate the pieces. I know what they look like, but I don't know. There's material that you need. So until I'm familiar with that, will I know exactly what we need? I don't know. And I can tell you that I do use money from the science budget, whatever that is. I just ask, you know, and I just put it in, like my year of the things that I know, and I get it. And I get whatever I need. Like this year, we already have an order in, well, we're putting an order together for what I may need for this next year. Because there's certain components you use all the time. There's certain channels that you need. I can get them. It's the last minute stuff I can't get. So if other people have it and they have materials that I could use, we will take anything. And if I knew who they were, I would reach out to them myself.
Well, maybe you could reach out to our administrators and then they could reach out to the community in various ways. If it's something not what the, you know, you know, if it's not like plutonium or something.
Correct.
There is something we can, you know. Let's hope it's not plutonium. I just, I think now if Barbara is, if Barbara now knows about it and Billy, maybe that will help you be able to expedite it so that this way, you know.
It will. And I can't thank you enough. And I can't thank you enough, you know? Because I've gone to Dan and crying just about, like, help me. And he has. And everybody has stepped up to the plate. And Dr. Anamon as well, asking me what I need, you know, what can I do?
I think it's great. Me too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, students, for coming out tonight.
Soundcoff, Miss Kay. Thank you.
Wait, my kids. And Brice. Yeah, always have you too.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And keep with the technology theme. We're going to have Mr. Winston come aboard. You guys can probably stay on the seat on the side. He's going to give us a brief overview of the website to some functionality issues that I think we're maybe having. So I'll hit the lights and you could jump right in there, Mr. Winston.
I don't know how we feel. Sorry. We're in focus.
I apologize if my back's going to be to you for a couple of slides in here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share a little bit about one of my latest projects and that's the revitalization review.
Do you have a mic over there? I think you're saying right.
I can, I'll get the one from there.
No, you can take this one. Yeah, I'll share it with you. Don't forget your red button. I'll share it with you.
Okay, just very good. I just wanted to thank everybody for their patience in awaiting the release of the new website. It was a rather large undertaking, probably a little bit larger than we had anticipated, certainly larger than I had anticipated. But I think the results turned out quite well. Right now, I'm just going to start at the homepage, district homepage. And I realize that I'm showing it to you on a laptop at the moment. Towards the end of demonstration, I'll show you how we can use a smartphone as well. One of the things that was most recently added was Joe Jordan's drone video. Yeah.
Is that thing in the middle of this video or?
So Joe took video of all the schools throughout the district.
That's optional.
Yeah, there's some really pretty shots. You don't realize how beautiful West Milford is until you see something like this from the sky.
Look at those mountains. Aren't they gorgeous?
So we're trying to do different seasonal photos. We're still waiting on the snow to get a good winter.
We have it tomorrow.
We have one in twelve hours.
Oh, there's, we'll do a screenshot of it.
Okay, while the video is running in the background, I want to talk to you a little bit about. That is part, one of the elements, yes. I want to share with you some of the design elements and give you an understanding about how the site was developed and why it was developed the way it was. On the homepage here, there are several areas that are designed to carry information that's important at different levels. The very top of the page, you'll see there's a notice or an announcement indicating that there's kindergarten registration. That is going to pop up on the main page for every person that visits. They can clear it, but it was one of those pieces of information that was important for people to see and so we put it up top in front of everybody. They can clear that out and then get a little bit more screen space. Another thing that you'll see pop up up there are weather events. So if we have a school closing or a delayed opening or an early dismissal, that will also pop up right over the main page so you can't miss it. And then you can also clear that. Also on the main page are obviously the video. And then what we have here are upcoming events. What this upcoming event does is it looks into the near future on the calendar and publishes here in easy-to-read format all of the events that are upcoming. Now, one of the things that we were looking at, and Ray was kind enough to share with us, was that the original version of this upcoming event and the original version of the district calendar was extremely busy. And most of that was driven by the content from the high school. So I took Ray's advice and what I did was I modified the calendar at the district level so that it displays the district information first and the school information second. And when you go to the calendar here, there's two ways to get to the calendar. One is on the yellow menu bar and the other is by clicking on View Calendar in the lower right-hand, left-hand corner. Now, when the calendar pops up, by default, because I'm looking at the district calendar, it only shows the district events. All of the school events are available by checking them off. So let's say you want to see what's going on on Maple Road. Just click off Maple Road and it'll add them to the list. A Macabins list, you can add just by that. And they're all color-coded. But originally, this calendar opened up with all the schools activated, which made this extremely busy. So now it just opens up with the district events with the ability to add. So this is nice for a parent who might have a Macabins student and an actual student. They can see them both at the same time.
Rob, before you move off to calendar, is there a place where there's a link for that paper of the whole school year of the district?
You mean the district's calendar?
Yeah.
Yes, it's not on, it's not on the calendar page. It's actually on the district page.
Okay.
So let me take a ride and we'll go there. So on the... I just lost my battery here.
What school is that of yours?
That's the school that I want to go to.
Rob, did you say that this?
Rob, did you say that this new website is available for mobile phones also?
Yes, it's available on...
Because today I tried to get onto the extranet on my mobile phone. I could not do so.
The extranet and the Word Document Library have been moved from the website into Google Docs. So you actually don't anymore, you don't even need to go through the website to get to those documents anymore. You can just, if you're a staff member, you can go to your shared-with-me folder in Google, and they'll be there. But on the website, on the website...
We don't have that, do we?
Yeah, I went on it today in Google. You go on that little thing that looks like a waffle, and then we can pull up any past documents. I was reading things from 2016.
They gave us a primer on how to, you know, step one, step two.
Well, I think I wanted today on my computer.
Once you sign in, you have access, you don't have to sign in again, you just...
When you sign into your email, then you go to that little dot thing at the top, right? I call it the waffle.
That's right.
Everything's under there.
Now, for example, the extranet, in order to access the extranet, those documents are intended to be for staff only, not for the public use. So when you go to For Staff, Extranet Document Library, what it's going to do is it's going to automatically launch Drive and show you those documents. Now, the thing is, if you were a member of the public, when it tried to launch Drive, it would say, "I don't think you have access to this," and it would prompt you to log in with your WMTPS login. If you don't have one, it won't give you access to this.
But you can do it on your phone.
Yes, you can.
I could try. I went to my mail, and I don't...
Where do I have? Not your email, you got to go on the website. You have to log in with Google.
So here, this is what it would look like on the phone. So you would just click on Menu, For Staff, Extranet Document Library, and it would launch. And if you have a phone and you're using the Google Drive app on your phone, this is even easier. Right now, it's just launching the browser-based version of Google Drive. But the ID here was, in the past, all staff members had, not only a Google ID, but they would have to have an ID on the website. And without both of them, they couldn't get to the documents. So I'm trying to cut out the middleman here. So there's no reason for us to maintain a separate set of logins for the website. All we need to do is tell them, tell the website, as long as they've got a Google account, they're good to go. So we streamline things. So there's very few things that anybody would have to log into the website for. Let me go back to the larger view. Now, on the main menu here, the yellow menu bar is where we store all of our basically primary areas in each site. So we're on the district site, so there will be a section for our district, which contains information about our schools, our staff, district news. So if we click on About Our Schools and School Calendar, this is where you're going to find the information you were looking for before. And it's got next year's calendar and the year after, and this year. This is this year's. Next year's is going to be here, and the year after is going to be on this link right here. A little bit different as far as where the information is placed, but the objective here was to try to make it as intuitive as possible, limit the number of clicks it takes to get there, and try to minimize clutter on the website.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I tried to get to the backpack the other day.
Uh huh.
And it took me 10 minutes.
Which backpack?
To find it. Any backpack in any school, because in order to navigate towards it, I was looking for Macabins.
Okay.
But it didn't seem to be where you would find it.
Okay.
Maybe I'm, but it took me over 10 minutes to find it.
All right, well, let me show you where it is, and you can let me know whether we need to improve its placement. Okay.
It's been a common issue.
Did anybody else have that issue?
Yeah. And I had a friend actually, like, follow the breadcrumbs back after they got the actual page, and they couldn't follow the breadcrumbs back to find it either.
I, you know what, after I found it, it took me another 10 minutes to find it again. Like, I couldn't remember. Maybe it's mine.
On any school, just click on For Families, Virtual Backpack. That's it. And it's the same on every school. The only thing that is a little bit different, we used to have something called a District-Wide Backpack, which kind of didn't really make sense, because you're not sending backpack items to the general public. We converted that into, let me go to District Home. That was, we moved that under Community Resources. And instead of calling it a backpack, call it a bulletin board. So here's where we post all the notices that are out there with regards to what was in the public backpack.
The other thing, Rob, that I found the other night, because I was looking at the courses study.
Yes.
The listing of the people are, there's people on here that don't work for us anymore, and they weren't with us at the beginning of the year. Is there, do we have somebody that's looking at that? Because like, I mean, Colleen Weiss-Madgusick is on there, Nina Purcell is on there. It's kind of like, is somebody, I know we put it together, so I'm trying to figure out why we, it's not, why we have things that need to be taken off.
Was that on the Program of Studies itself?
It was the Program of Studies, the PDF, because I was looking at it, because I went to the, I went the other night for the presentation by Karen Johnson. So she was talking about it, and I brought it up. And it has a listing of the staff, but it's not the correct staff.
Want to pull that up, Rob?
Sure. Is this under the...
It's under the Program of Studies for '22, '23 school year. You know, it says business, you know, it's like the index.
You can go through the guidance.
Oh, guidance.
It seems like it takes a very long time to hit.
Quickly, so you just go right, go right to Guidance and quickly. Program of Studies, right there.
Want to go left here?
On the page.
On the left, right there on the left. On your guidance newsletters.
Right down, go down, go down, go down, right there.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we're in the, so one of the reasons for that, like you said, that's why I asked you, was on the Program of Studies itself, because that is last year's Program of Studies.
I don't know, I don't know how I got to it. Again, I was doing it on my phone.
The '22, '23 Program of Studies was created last winter.
Yeah, this is the...
This is '22, isn't that...
Is this what's showing up now on our website, '21, '22?
I mean, like, there's some things that...
Yeah, I put up whatever we had, whatever I had available to me that was the latest and greatest. It was either, it was either put this up, or if I put nothing up...
Did someone have written a profile for it this year?
I'll check. So this from the 20th, that's for this school year. This was created last winter. So what the students are getting access to now, because we're just in the beginning stages of next year's scheduling.
Right.
So the next year's Program of Studies is being shared with students now, and is probably not active on our link, on our link yet, because Guidance isn't ready to do that, because they're just in the process of sharing, finalizing the Program of Studies, getting our new courses in there, and then putting it up there. So once we're ready for students to begin the scheduling process, I mean, they're just meeting with councils, starting to talk about meeting with councils now, that's when the new one will be up there.
One of the things...
But it's important to have this one. It's important to have our Program of Studies there, because that's for the courses that we're running at the moment. It's a PDF. It's not typically something that you would pull down, edit in the year. Like I said, it was created last year with existing staff at that time.
Okay, but why I ask is because the people that are on here, we're not on, we're not here for the start of the '22, '23 school year. I mean...
But they were, but we didn't know that when this was created in the winter of '21, '22. That's what I was just saying, explaining.
And I will say, the one that was sent out to the current eighth-grade families is updated with all the correct staff on there for the '23, '24. That just went out to the eighth-grade families that are scheduling.
Right, so at this time next year, the document that'll be on our website will be the one that's going out that you have access to that went out to families first.
Yes, I just went to go check it, and it is all up to date.
But it's gone out.
It is to the families of eighth graders, because course requests opened up today.
Do they current eight, nine, 10, 11s have it?
Well, no. You're saying that it went after the eighth, did it get emailed out, or...
Yes, Karen Johnson. I mean, I only know because I have an eighth grader. It could have possibly have gone to the ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th.
Kids who are eight, nine, 10, 11s with the high school.
But when will you upload what they send out?
The Guidance controls this link directly.
Because if they sent that out, our parents, the parents go to the website, they're not going to see it.
Yeah, the Guidance Department doesn't go through Mr. Winston for this. They upload it when they, when they're ready to put it out.
Now, one of the things that's really important to understand is that in building this website, we knew that there was going to be some content that's out of date. But I didn't want that to slow us down from getting the site built, with the understanding that immediately thereafter, we were going to be combing the information that's on the website, looking for things that are out of date, and soliciting the people that provided the old piece for the new piece. And that's what we're doing right now. We're actually...
So who's in charge of doing that?
At the moment, it's myself, with the assistance of a webmaster that we've hired through NJ, the New Jersey...
Northern Region.
Yes, Northern Region, thank you, N.R.E.S.A.
So if somebody finds something that's out of date, they should email you?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I get emails regularly with corrections, edits, and that kind of thing, and I jump on those as quickly as I can.
Do you have data on what the most popular things people look for on the website?
We will have, we will have that information.
I mean, you would, I would assume you would have the analytics from the old website, right?
The old, the old website didn't really have analytics. That was one of its...
But like, just as a parent, I would say it's the menu, the overall calendar, because everybody asks, "When's spring break? Do we have this day off? Do we have that day off?" And the backpack. Is there any way to get mean things like that on up front?
Sure.
And not five clicks down the road?
Correct, yes, absolutely. That's, again, that's part of the, the second phase of going, once we've got the site built, and we have something that people can actually see and touch, now that gives them something tangible to give me some feedback on. Yes, that is very good, I like that, but it would be better if it was closer to the top. One thing, yeah, we have to balance is, everybody wants their things at the top, so we would have a website with, you know, a very busy homepage. So what I'm looking to do is try to come up with an organizational structure on the website that's both intuitive and not very deep, meaning you don't have to click on a lot of different places to get to things.
I don't want to diminish the amount of work that's done on this, because this is a huge undertaking, and I've done it before with different companies I've worked with. I just wish that maybe this had come out as a beta version to like, a few people, so that they could figure out and give you this feedback, and not the whole district at once.
It was. The site was available, the site was available for several months.
But were you soliciting feedback from people?
Yes, absolutely.
Who was giving feedback? Because I'm getting calls from, that backpack thing was a big deal, because the only reason I looked is because I had somebody that wanted to find it and couldn't find it. So I think that, I agree, I understand this was a big undertaking, but I think we have to find a way to see if we can draw out some people and figure out faster what we need to do, because the amount of clicks is a lot of clicks. I mean...
Anything that's going to require more than four clicks to get to, I need to know.
Too many.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, that...
And most people are not using this on their computers, they're using it on their phones. And it does look much different on the phone to this, what we just saw.
Right.
And you're getting to things different ways on your phone to what you just showed us on the web page.
How interactive is the search?
The search feature on the website right now is actually in the process of being built. We are using a Google-enhanced search functionality. So it's already been submitted to Google, and it's been crawled, the site's been crawled several times. So over time, it'll get better and better and better. And the search feature on the, let me just go to the big site, because it's a lot easier to show. Here's what, this magnifying glass up on top.
If you type in backpack, does it give you listing of schools?
No, it gives you Amazon backpack ads.
Jessica, really?
Yeah.
Parent resources, school resources?
I typed in backpack ads, nothing came up.
They wanted to tell me if you're a backpacker.
Okay.
They know you're shattered.
Well, but you did it on, did you do it on your phone?
Yeah.
That's why, because the phone is different.
Yeah, so if you put backpack in on the phone...
You have tactical gear.
I'm tactical.
Well, if you're searching, if you're using the phone search, you're not searching our site, you're...
No, I know the site. She's on the site. I'm on the site. Yeah. I went to the keyword search on the phone and put in backpack, and tactical gear came up. Can you click on digital backpack? There is some West Milford stuff, though, too.
It's secondary.
But it's secondary.
Do I...
No, you can just click on it in the bottom left.
District-wide backpack?
Yeah.
So there is a district-wide backpack.
Yes.
So what I admitted...
Scroll down to, because they, there are ads.
There are ads. I feel like our West Milford...
But if you scroll down, you see parent resources, school resources.
Shouldn't be secondary, though.
So for the 200-something parents that have to find a permission slip tonight or tomorrow for Macabins, how do they get to their digital backpack?
Macabins, for families, Macabins Virtual Backpack.
Under field trips, there it is.
It's finding the backpack.
The trick here was to, if you remember the old website, each school didn't really have its own site. They had pages. And if you clicked on something, you would all of a sudden, you're back somewhere in the mix, and you didn't know how you got there. So for every school, if you need to get to the virtual backpack, it's going to be the same steps for every single school. No difference. How you search for things, how you find food, you know, the menus, services menus, transportation issues, anything like that. One of the things I'd like to take the next step as far as improving the user interface for this, is getting a better understanding of what parents use day to day, and making that like, one-click thing. Click on your parent, you know, parent important links, and boom, it's all there on one page.
Well, I mean, it's definitely the parent portal where they're looking upgrades and homework.
On the calendar, is that something that you'd be linked to your own personal Gmail calendar?
Yes. If you want to, you can, you can, if you're on any of these calendars, you can copy the events down to your own calendar. And each school has its own calendar. So if we were to look at the calendar here for Macabins, you'll notice that it's got Macabins calendar as the primary, but you can also turn on the district backpack, I mean, the district calendar as well.
The other thing that I, and maybe it's just me, when you go onto the homepage and all those big dates are there, like, it seems like it's taking up too much space for like the month. You know what I'm talking about?
The upcoming events.
Yeah, doesn't it, because maybe you'd have more room for like, the yearly calendar that we're looking for to have it there, because I think most parents will know to go to the school now, since you're talking about it, but to have those big, it seems like, I just feel like that's a lot of space on the website. And when you bring it up on your phone, it's like, you've got to really scroll to see all those things.
Unfortunately, certain elements, we don't have any, we don't have any control over how it's sized or how it's laid out. These are considered apps inside of the website design. Now, there's not to say that we can't eliminate this and put something else in its place, but it might not have the same functionality of automatically looking into the future and displaying any of the events.
I mean, that, there, when I look at that, because it just seems like it's one, it's one line, there's no way to have it off to the side and be able to say, you know, January, and then this is the district, and then, you know, January 24th, and then a line, but not so that it takes up the whole center of your website. Like, it seems like it's such a big, taking up so much room.
I, I hear you.
I, I, I know.
I feel your pain.
I just, I just know, I just know exactly what Tara said. People go to look for that one particular calendar that you brought up before, and that I feel like should be on the main page. I, I think that's one thing that they're, because they're looking about whether or not they can get, you know, vacations and different things, what days are off, that's what they're looking for.
I think there's a couple, there's a couple documents that fall into that category.
Right, yeah.
As must-haves. And I think it's, it would be easy enough for me to create a, an easy-to-find place on the website where you just click on, just one click and there they all are.
And we have to tell you this, because if we don't tell you, you're not gonna know.
No, this is excellent feedback, that's the only way that this, this improves and grows, is by understanding what people like about it, what they don't like about it, and making changes.
I think when you first started this process, when I was, you know, sitting in the audience, you had like a task force of people in the district that were helping you with this. How have you been utilizing them through the process?
Well, that, that task force has since been expanded since-
Wouldn't they be great people to help you with this?
Well, I mean, they did help me come up with the design and the layout. Building, populating the content was the most top, time-consuming component.
So they didn't have anything to do with the-
Oh, no, they actually, they, no, they did. Actually, the extranet, the extranet, all those documents that were pulled out of the old website and put into this extranet document library on Google, they did that. They, they did all of that.
That was the end, that was the end.
They're reconstituting the group, though, I mean, it's certainly not the-
That wasn't the parent group, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I'm talking about the parent group.
Yeah, that wasn't the parent group, that was the education.
Those are the stakeholders, right? Like, they're the ones that are-
The parent group was more intended to give me guidance as to content, look, and feel. Well, I wanted to know from them, from, from a parent's standpoint, what are the things that you need to see on the website? And how should it be organized to best suit the way that you use the website? They've got the same kind of information from a staff perspective, and then also from sort of an anonymous, just a member of the population, or a member, community member.
Right.
How does a parent get to the parent portal? I would say that's the number-one thing that parents look at, which is grades, homework, if their child has an IEP of 504.
It's one click?
That's the bar.
You go to families.
You go to-
No, go back.
Sort of, no?
Do that again, so the, the quicklink bar?
Quicklink bar.
Like that, I mean, is that expandable?
This, on this particular, on website template, they allow up to six quicklinks like this. But, that's not to say that I can't build the same kind of capability on a menu, I could have, I could put a, a menu pickup here called quicklinks, and just build, you know, build as many as we want and organize them in any way we want.
But again, I think it needs to be user-friendly for the phone, too. I think that's what, we can put all this stuff on the website, but people aren't going onto their computers. When they look at the information, they're usually on the roof, they're at work, they're, they're looking on their phones.
Right. And, and when we did the design on this and choosing the way that certain pages looked, we did keep in mind that it was gonna be used mostly on a mobile platform. We also designed it for like a tablet platform, but quite honestly, not many people use, you know, people, I mean, my wife uses an iPad like it's, you know, like it's the only device in the world. But most people are either gonna be using their desktop computer or their phone, with 90% of the people being on their phone.
And the parent portal is on the phone, right? It is right there.
Yeah.
May I recommend that all these things be put down in an email form and submitted to the technology committee, because we'll beat this to death all night, otherwise. You can call me Grumpy afterwards. I didn't know I was gonna get applause, but I'll do it again.
I could, Grumpy now.
I think you should get your committee that you had before, with the parents and those people from the outside, and have them sit again and go through what we put together and see what you get back from them now.
That's a great idea, because now with, with something tangible in front of them that's a straw man, the recommendations will be more pointed and more relevant, more relevant. Because before, we had something built, we were just thinking in nebulous terms what it's gonna look like. Now we've got something to get touch and feel. Like you were saying, that section looks too big, or whatever.
And, and once you have the analytics, you'll know where people are going, you'll be able to interpret that.
That's turned out on the way you want to see it.
I'm just rather surprised there's no PTA, PTO, BTSO information on the site. I don't know if that was, if they're not, if they, it's not on the individual school site?
Thank you, Mr. Winston.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. All right, thank you. And lastly, I know we mentioned very briefly at the reorganization meeting about the stabilization grant, it came in the day before we went to break, middle of the afternoon on Friday before the holidays. We touched on it briefly at the reorganization meeting, but I'm gonna ask, as we get deeper into our budget conversations, Ms. Francisco, if you can kind of clarify for the board and for the community exactly what we received and to what it-
Sure. When the grant was opened in September, we had a few weeks in order to pull it together. Basically, we looked at some of the shortcomings that we had in the 22, 23 budget, considering all the changes that were made with transportation and the price of gas, things that we didn't foresee a year ago when we were building the budget. So we determined, we, 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 as with any grant, you have to create a program that you want to address and put dollar figures to that. They reviewed everything in Trenton along with our financial reports. We didn't have our audit as yet, but they could tell from our secretary's reports, poor secretary's reports, what our financials were. So we had requested $2.7 million in total. Resolution that was approved was for 2.7, 2,769,099. And that was based upon, we took a look at the money that we lost in the five years and what we anticipate losing for this year, 23, 24. And when we did get awarded the money, and we were very fortunate to get anything, because a lot of the, as I mentioned a few months ago, about $183 million worth of requests for a $30 million budget that the governor had put together. So with the award letter that Dr. Anemo received, basically took what we had put together for that $2.7 million and outlined what they were considering for the $1.3 million that we did receive. So basically, that's, that's where we're at. The letter that we got from the state of New Jersey said that they were funding the math program that we are anticipating putting in. The move for Highlander Academy to here, some of the supplies that we would need in order to create a, a program here. And for the contracted services for transportation that we anticipated running into a shortfall because of the costs of transportation. They denied our request for any kind of salaries, for increases, any kind of adjustments for health benefits, which were significant over what we had originally budgeted. So we were basically left with the $1.3 million. And when you look at all the, the aid, the awards that were made throughout the state, we did pretty well. We, we got one of the, the highest awarded amounts out of all the districts that did get something. So it will help us this year. If there is anything that we don't spend in those three areas, it will fall into fund balance for next year that we could appropriate it to assist in our 23, 24 budget. But that's basically it, and if there's any questions, the board members, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, I just wanna say thank you to Barbara and to Billy and the, all of the staff, because they worked very hard on getting this grant up for us, and it couldn't come at a better time. And I think we, you know, need to say thank you to you for the hard work that you put into it. And I also would like to thank Senator Bucow, who I think was really in West Milford's corner, helping us with this grant. So I just wanna say thank you to all of you.
Senator Bucow was really nice, he reached out to Dr. Anemo to let him know that we were successful in our request. So that was, that was a really good way to start the holiday.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Anemo. Mrs. Francisco, special reports and correspondence?
Right. For the next meeting, we will have the minutes from the December 20th meeting for review and consideration.
For my president's report, I don't have much, other than it's already been a fun and interesting ride, and I couldn't be more proud of just representing anything in West Milford. The texts and all of the emails that I've gotten and everything, I'm, I'm just really passionate about always what's best for our community. So thank you. At this time, this portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda alone. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, their group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak?
None, I'd like to close public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any changes to this agenda? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood for Education?
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number One.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, I have, I have, yes, I have something.
Carrie?
I'm concerned about this. I went to look at the documentation, and I know it's titled "Two Funds," and it's $12,000 for two people to go to Disney World to learn leadership skills. And at first, when I heard about it, because it was, it was brought to us in committee as a surprise, we didn't know it was coming in, I'm just concerned about the rest of the administrators in the district. I, I would like to see that $12,000 in grant money used to provide professional development for the entire district. I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure how that can be done, but I know that you can get a speaker and you can do workshops for, for this and provide this opportunity right within the district. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing as none, Mrs. Francisco, roll call.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke, Personnel and Student Affairs?
I'd like to move Items One through Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Second.
I have Thirteen. Any questions or comments under Personnel and Student Affairs, one through thirteen? Seeing as, seeing as none, roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino, Operations and Finance?
For Special Actions under Operations Finance, I'd like to move Items One through Three.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions? Debbie?
Could there be a clarification as to why we have Number Three under Operations and Finance, which we just voted in under Number One, under Education?
It's for different personnel. So the education, travel request was underneath the education section of the budget, of the agenda, and this is for transportation, which comes under Finance and, under my purview.
Okay, so it's, okay, so we, I just wanna clarify, forgive me for, for sounding a little slow in the uptake here. So education was education, but this is transportation, which is under Operations and Finance.
Right.
Okay.
Any other, oh, Mr. Guarino?
So maybe for the future, it might be better to not have something as vague on the agenda? So again, it's for, I guess, it's for two different things, but it might be good for the public to see what those things are.
Oh, you know what?
So we don't know, I know it's under the board stuff, but it'd be good to see what the difference is, because it's, I get what Debbie's saying, it sounds like the same thing.
Yeah, and, and actually, if, if reading was the proper thing to do, under Education says instructional support in schools, so support staff, and then under O and F is-
It says it.
It says it.
But it doesn't really say what it's for.
Right.
All right, so we know what the first one was for under Education, because Terry brought that up, what, maybe for the public, do they, do we know what this is for?
I just have, I just have a comment on that. Everything was lumped together in that Number One, and unfortunately, everything got voted no, or everything got voted yes. So it isn't, it probably wasn't-
It could be pulled out.
Right, I think it should have been separate, because then maybe there would have been a discussion on people's, why people felt the way they did. So, you know, that really goes to the administration, how they wanna break it down. But people are looking at dollars for a reason. So. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is the way it's always been presented, but certainly can be discussed for the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I do think, again, the reason that it's being brought up is because all of us are watching dollars now. We're very concerned about dollars, and that might have, that has something to do with the effect. Sometimes it's not what's being presented, but the amount of, the dollar amount, and how they could, it could be best used. And maybe we're not in agreement or whatever, but that's not meaning that we don't wanna support anybody. But again, we vote- But again, we voted no on, I, I'm speaking for myself, I voted no on things I would have voted yes, but because they're clumped together, I cannot break them apart.
Is this discussion about Operations and Finance, like this item? Okay.
So, I think it's just...
It's an overall discussion.
Oh, okay, about Operations and Finance.
How that is, so if it's broken out, right, so if there's more, I think that, I get what Linda's saying, and I probably was maybe even a little bit the opposite, there might be four things under this Operation thing. We know that it probably isn't, but if there's four things, I might vote yes to three of those, and one to, one I might vote no. I think that's where, right?
Right, exactly. Because it's, it's, it's an overall situation, and if you're, you know, again, you either have to vote yes or no, but there'd be things there you want to vote yes for and things you want to vote no for, and you have to decide which way, what side of the coin, you know.
To, Kate, I think it's like how we break out the field trips, like they are all broken out separately, because we might want to have a discussion about a specific field trip and why and benefit, that kind of thing.
Any other comments, questions? Well?
In jumping into the discussion, I think that kind of falls into the purview of possibly entangling ourselves as if we're running the district, if we are voting on one thing and not another, because we may accidentally end up causing a domino effect of things that are approved and aren't approved, but have the influence on something that wasn't approved versus being approved. So, I think it being lumped together, and as we have done things, may not be the most desirable way. It is kind of in the purview of a public official's role to vote that way, as a whole, as we do with the budget.
I think it's important to recognize that when someone wants to go for professional development, which is what these items are for, it certainly goes to their supervisor, and it gets approved before it comes to the board. So, it's our responsibility as administrators to determine whether or not there's money in the current budget to support that and the value of what is being requested. So, I think, you know, I think when it makes the agenda, it's because we feel it's worthwhile. In this particular situation, just for clarification, in case someone doesn't know, our chief mechanic is going to the Transportation Supervisor's Workshop, and our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds is going to a conference down in Atlantic City so that he can meet with vendors and do professional development, because it's required in, under his certificate, that he takes continuing education courses, which are available at that time. So, it's really important that they attend things like this for the continuing education that they're required for their certifications.
Linda?
I just want to qualify, clarify something. We're questioning dollar amounts, which fiscally we're supposed to be doing. So, the reason that that was questioned, it didn't have to do with what was being done, it was the dollar amount, because we're in the middle of looking at, we closed, we're shutting a school, we're restructuring, so I think everybody around the table now is starting to look at dollars and say, you know what, maybe, maybe I didn't look at this before, but I need to now. I understand where you're going, I'm not saying, I'm not picking and choosing who goes where or what they go. I was looking at the dollar amount, purely the dollar amount. And, you know, I understand exactly what Barbara says, we are committed to making sure that everybody sees, gets their development so that they meet what they have to meet as far as their certifications and different things like that. And I think we're off on a tangent, because this was not this particular item, it was the one, on Number One. And I probably should have said it then.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any last comments on Operations and Finance? Mrs. Francisco, the roll call.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes. The rest of the meeting is workshop, so this is for discussion under Education. Mrs. Lockwood?
So, the following items are being presented for anticipated action at the Budget Ethics Regular Meeting of January 31st, 2023, Numbers One through Six. Any questions or comments, any discussion? Seeing as none?
I just have a question. You know, I was looking at the, do we still have a DECA program at the high school? Do we have a class, or is it a club now? I believe it's a club.
I believe it's a club. I don't think we have a class. Was it, it used to be a class?
Yes, there was a class. Yeah.
It was a great class.
But I'm glad to see that it's...
I believe it's a club, because I remember on a recent agenda, I remember on a recent agenda, the teacher approved for it is a Macapin special education teacher, and I remember looking at the hours and quite honestly thinking that it was sad, because of the difference in what used to be there and what is, you know.
Yeah, and it was actually a room, it was a DECA room, which is now the Transitional Class.
Cove, is that where it was?
Yeah, yeah, it was great. Okay, just curious.
It was also a DECA room in Macapin.
Yes.
That's where Jeanette was here.
Might be a STEM room now. Kakudala.
Do you have the back, you have that door to go outside?
Probably, yeah.
Financial Literacy Room now. Any last, anything else for discussion under Education? Seeing as none, Mrs. Van Dyke, Personnel and Student Affairs?
Yes, there's Items One through Twenty-Nine that are on the agenda for next meeting.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Go ahead. On Item Number, Motion Number Twenty, I think it's Twenty-Four, for the flag, Girls' Flag Football, what, when does that run? When does that program run?
It's going to be on Sundays in the spring, late winter, spring.
It's in the spring?
Late winter, into the spring.
Will they do practices or anything?
Everything's going to be on a Sunday. So, practices will be once a week on Sunday, and then games will be on a Sunday. This is funded 100% through the New York Jets for the first year, which is this year now, uniforms, stipend, all that stuff. Obviously, we'll have to see how it goes, evaluate next year, participation's high, it isn't, and whether to continue or not, but, and they are doing something with the Jets facilities. I know they're having the girls play games down there at some point, in Florham Park, not, not MetLife Stadium, but looking forward to it. Like I said, I think I mentioned a few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, this is a student-led initiative, because one of our transfer students moved in from a town where she played at that her old high school, and she whipped up some support in the high school, and we were able to, Mr. Trent applied for the grant, earned it, and now we have a team together for the first year. So, year one, we're looking to have fun, we're not necessarily going to count wins and losses, I don't believe, but should be a fun event, and because it's on a Sunday, and because it's non-contact, the girls who participate can also play an NJSI sport, like softball, cross, track and field. This will just be the extra, which is why they're limiting it to Sundays. So, should be fun.
Just to piggyback off of that, right, the, so everybody knows the Pro Bowl will be a flag football game this year, that's kind of interesting, but do you know how many girls we have signed up?
I do not.
I thought I might have heard like sixty or so? Is that right?
Sixty is going to be tough.
That's a good kickoff.
I think you only play seven out of ten.
So, they're going to have multiple teams then.
It's going to be a busy Sunday.
I do have, the reason I, the reason I ask that question is because I also see on Motion Number Twenty-Eight, that the, the person who's the advisor for that is also the advisor, is one of the coaches for softball.
Correct.
Which I, when I looked at it, I couldn't understand how they could do both, because we don't usually give two coaching positions in the same season to somebody, though. And I also had a kind of a question about that, because that person is a new person to our district, and he's making the same amount as people who have been here for years coaching, and I was curious why, is that, is that, I didn't know if that was a topic, if that's an error, because...
You talking about the track and field?
No, I'm looking at the assistant softball, because he's making the same as the person above him there, and I, I thought that we had a guide for our coaches in that they come in at a certain level, and that seems like, for somebody who's not even in here a year...
I think he coached, I thought he coached last year as well.
He's only been with us since December.
No. He's been coaching longer than that.
In our district?
I don't know about our district, but he's definitely been coaching longer. I'll circle back, but I thought he's been, I thought he was here last year as well, but I know he's got a longer coaching experience, but I'll flag that.
I understand he has experience, but it seems to me that he's coming in and coaching at the same stipend as people who've been here for years.
All right, I'll look, this is discussion.
You know, we've talked about this, because it's just like a teacher coming in on a different step of the guide. I didn't know we did that with coaches, but I guess we do.
Yeah, I, so the guide is, don't they start at A and then work their way up to C and then C?
ABC, three, three steps.
Why is that C?
Because, because I will say, I'll remember even going back a few years, even with our head football coach, we didn't even, he didn't even start at C, and he was a, he coached football for a lot of years, and I think, I just want to be consistent when we think about what we're, what we're just talking about.
I don't want it to be a problem down the road with other coaches.
Well, I have my notes in my office, I'll go through them tomorrow. Unless it's a snow day.
Anything else under Personnel and Student Affairs? Carrie?
Number Eleven, where we're transferring the Westbrook teachers to their new assignments, how is that presented to them? Like, I'm just curious. Number Thirteen, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, I'm just, you know...
So, I met with the teachers individually.
Yeah, okay.
And I told them, this is where, you know, our plan is to move you for, for next school year, so. It was, it was a face-to-face, you know, one-on-one meeting, so.
I'm just glad they didn't just get a letter in their mailbox and just school project thing.
I, I, I'll take them, you know, because you said you were going to...
Yes, so I met with all the, all the people who were really being moved around, and everybody's, most everybody's happy, I would say. You know, it's hard to go through this much change in one school year, we typically don't see these number, this number of transfers on any agenda. This is a very anomalous year, but they're very excited to have Dr. Schwartz there. So, wonderful person in the community, and we look forward to have.
Any other questions under Personnel and Student Affairs? Seeing as none, Mr. Guarino, Operations and Finance?
So, the following items are presented for anticipated action at the Budget Ethics Regular Meeting, January 31st.
Any discussion on one through nine under Operations and Finance? Seeing as none, Mr. Seidowitz, Policy?
Okay, Resolutions One through Twenty-One under Policy are being presented for anticipated action at the Budget Ethics Regular Meeting of January 31st, 2023. Any comments, questions, or jokes?
Seeing as none, I, oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
Number Two, the recommendation of students to approve the second reading of the revised policy of the holidays. Did that happen in the homework?
No.
No?
No.
No, it had to do with, the committee met, I guess it was December, try to get my position right, so it was in December the committee met to discuss, there was some, some concern in the fall, while we had some, the schools were closed for religious holiday, but there were athletic teams that had events, practices, in one case, they had a team dinner, maybe a team breakfast, and, you know, the board, the committee felt it wasn't right to schedule those events on days when schools were closed for religious observances. So, you know, when schools are closed, for example, athletics don't necessarily stop, like for winter break, there's no practice, there would be no practice on Christmas perhaps, but on the 26th, there would be a practice or a game. So, they just wanted to amend that on the day, that on the day of the holiday, they didn't want to have the athletic events, and students who participate, who have religious observances shouldn't be punished in the event that they are observing.
How do we, what do we call a holiday? Is it a day off, a Friday off?
Well, I think they was just religious holidays, so it wasn't necessarily like NJAA Convention, which is November, but it's not religious, so I don't think we included that in the policy. It was religious holidays.
There's like, there's like sixty, sixty days or so in the school year, when there aren't New Jersey recognized religious holidays, so...
Maybe not even.
It doesn't give you that many days to do things, so you might want to be careful how, how to put that in.
Right, I think the committee understands that different students celebrate different holidays, and, you know, conflict for you may not be a conflict for somebody else, but then on a different day, the other person may have a conflict. So, you're right, there's a, we get a list every year from the Department of Recognized Religious Holidays, and it is a comprehensive list, but obviously, not every student is going to be celebrating every, or observing every holiday.
I have a question, because I don't remember abolition policies before, are they two, do they have to have two reads?
So, the abolishing will be one read, but it'll be next week anyway.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So, on Tuesday, we're going to have two second reads, two abolition, and then the rest will be first reads.
Any other questions or comments under Policy? Seeing as none, I'll move to old business, is there any old business tonight? Mr. Seidowitz?
I'm really a pain, aren't I? So, branding, I sent everybody an email regarding just ideas about logos, so we can kind of get moving on the branding of the district, especially during this critical time of restructuring. So, I've heard back from Mr. Lippi, I'd love to hear back from anybody else on thoughts, and maybe we could put it on the next Education Committee agenda, but let's get rocking, let's get rolling, please.
When, when did you send that email?
I believe, maybe yesterday or the day before that, so not too far away, so if the email wasn't checked yet, then...
Yeah, I don't have it.
Okay, I could resend it.
So, in the, in the fall, when we were, when it was brought up that the schools would all move to black and gold but keep their mascots at SRT, it was discussed with all the PTA and PTO presidents, that some of them had invested quite a lot of money in the current artwork for their logos, and I feel like that was part of the deal, when they like agreed to do the black and gold versus keeping their colors, that they would get to keep their thing.
I guess we can continue discussing.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
So, I'd like to ask, to put it on the agenda for the next SRT meeting, and then the Education meeting following that meeting.
Great.
I'm just wondering, I, I understand, I did get your email and respond to you, because I, I think it's a discussion that we should have here. I think that what Tara said is correct. One of the things in the discussion as we were going up to restructuring, we, we wanted them to move to the black and gold, but that, you know, Maple Road could still be the Mustangs, you know, PK could still be the Panthers, but just that the black and gold would become their colors. And I see what you did with the logos in the black and gold, and maybe that's something that we could put out to them. I don't know that we, you know, I, I think you should probably discuss it in Education before you bring it to the PTA people.
Oh, that's fair.
You know, so that maybe the board members will all, and the administration has a chance to give that input that they want before we...
That's a good idea.
Of course, they're going to bring it up now. I'm just thinking that we, you know...
Yeah, it could be on both agendas for ideas.
Branding, branding has been on the, on the SRT agenda probably at least the entire year, leading into restructuring.
Yeah, and it truly follows the strategic planning, which was, was comprehensive, and everybody on the board at the time worked really... everybody on the board at the time worked really hard on it with community members. And it was decided on how, the general idea of how to move forward with branding. And I think it's important that we move forward. So if we keep doing that, that's great.
Well, you, you mentioned.
Claire had something, sorry.
It's okay.
No, I was just actually going to bring up about the black and gold and SRT. I, the PTOs and the PTA's did say that some of them had a lot of existing, yeah, merchandise still. And I think what was decided was that they weren't going to order anything new going forward in their school colors, but they were going to be allowed to use up what they had already purchased. And I think some schools had more than others, if I'm correct, in that remembrance.
And perhaps archiving things like that, because that's important. You know, we made a transition. We are no longer red and white, we are black and gold, and this is the transition that led to it because it is historical for this district.
Lana?
I wanted to comment because you actually, in your email, mentioned Montville. And Montville is one of the, we have gone to their, I've gone to their branding and others around the table have. And one of the things that they did do in Montville is they even let them keep, they're, they let them keep their mascots, they just changed their colors all to the green. So I think that we were kind of compromising because of the dollar amount that was put out by the PTA's and PTO's on the wear that they could, you know. And then as we move probably into next year, maybe they'll be able to see that, so.
Thank you. Peter.
This is my thing, I made an offhanded mark here when we're taking our pictures. None of us had anything that was Westover behind us either. And that could, you know, maybe next year we all get dressed like, you know, you guys are doing the gray, green and black thing tonight, but we can do the black and gold.
Or some colors for real.
Our TV science has a green screen, we could do all kinds of stuff with.
Any other old business? Well?
Just a quick, if we could add administrative presentations to the next education committee agenda? That's it.
And we did have a nice one tonight.
Yeah, we did, it was awesome.
We've already, we'll, we'll add that to ed committee, but we've already begun that process. We have the 31st scheduled. We have a presentation coming with Mary Reinhold, and we are displaying in the back of the room and in the side, we're going to have all of our recent school of character promising practices on display. We should have teachers and staff members here standing with the presentation from their, from the promising practices. And it's really a collection of the last three or four years because the, you know, with the COVID restrictions that we are on, that's something we would have been doing. You know, we had done that in the past. With COVID restrictions, we got away from having those types of groups, you know, altogether. So it's kind of a, a nice way to bring, bring all those things back. So on the 31st, we will have a school of character presentation and Mrs. Reinhold will do a little, little conversation with the board and come and talk on behalf of schools of character. So we have a process in place for looking at what we're going to do each one.
Excellent.
I'm going to be presenting at the February meeting about update on our district math goal with some math staff members to come in and show some of the conquer math and hands-on things that we've been working on along with some other things. So, you know, be ready, you might be asked to play with some hands-on geometry manipulatives and that sort of thing.
At least they don't have to solve a geometry problem.
Thank you, Mr. Nova. Anything else under old business?
Seeing none, like to close old business.
Second. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Oh, sorry, all in favor of closing old business?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we can move on to new business.
I think we have to read this.
I'll start it next week.
That's, it's a big meeting.
Yeah, because I think that's the, I was planning to do it next week.
Any other new business?
I know that I might have a hard time with the budget meeting and the date. If the board would consider possibly a change of date to the following week, it'd be greatly considered, but I'm just throwing that out there for my own persons.
You know, at the March meeting?
The April meeting.
Oh, April, okay.
The 20th.
Is there a date, the one you can have it done on? Barbara, is there a drop date on there?
I'm sorry.
Is this that, the date when we have to have it?
Yes.
What, so if we move it?
It has to be before that, can't be after that.
Right, right. But probably if the governor doesn't give us our state aid on a timely basis the way they did it last year, then we're going to be, I'm going to be crunching.
I think you said with the public here in April.
Yeah, but she's got to go to the end.
So we're in January. I would like to ask Barbara if she could put this on the committee agenda for operations and finance? And if you guys can discuss it first there and then bring it to the rest of us to see if it's possible to move? And if so, when and what time? I think let's, we have, at least we have some time to discuss this. Is that okay?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other new business? Well?
Can we please add Hillcrest to the operations and finance meeting?
Consider it done. Any other new business?
Seeing none, like to close new business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and or directly related to the operation of the Westover Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes and then, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register, provide and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specifically legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak?
My name is Joseph Connors. I live at 37 Ivy Drive. I just wanted to get up, to take a couple of minutes to express how happy I am that you guys did have the robotics team come in and demonstrate to you guys. Robotics is something that I personally am very, I, I think it's very important for these students to experience, and I want to congratulate them for how well they did perform last year in Seapurge. They kind of got a late, late start on things and they did a phenomenal job, outperforming a lot of teams that had a lot more time to prepare and a lot more resources. So they really did do a good job and they overcame a lot of challenges. On top of that, I think it's also important to recognize some of the other people that did help out. I know parts of the administration were very important in kind of making that happen, one of which is no longer part of us. But I think it's appropriate to thank Colleen Weiss-Magistrick for all the work that she did in helping get that ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Seeing none, I'd like to close public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Claire, can you read the executive session, please?
Sure, I just read it.
That's right.
So 8:40, 8:40? 8:40 PM, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executives, the executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second.
Thank you. No action will be taken during executive session, therefore the Westover Board of Education will dismiss from that meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.